Okay, is it on? Yeah, okay, cool. And the August 10, 2023 meeting of the Corvallis School Board is called to order at 6:30 PM. In the interest of public health and safety for all community members, especially for immunocompromised individuals and their families, the Corvallis School Board will continue to offer a virtual option for board member and district personnel participation. Additionally, public comment is available at some meetings, both in person and virtually. Information about how to provide public comment is available on the Corvallis School District website. The board agenda and packet, as well as the link to the district YouTube channel, are available on the school board page on the district website. Public meetings are live streamed on the district's YouTube channel, and a recording is posted to the same channel typically the day after the meeting. Tonight, we have Director Sarah Finger-McDonald, Director Sammy Aldo Bra, Director Judah Largent, Director, Co-Vice Chair Shawna Tominey, Co-Vice Chair Therese Jones, and Director Chris Hawkins, and myself, Chair Luwee White Bear, in attendance, all in person. The first thing we have to go over is the action on matters discussed in executive session. As you know, we are not at liberty to discuss anything that took place in executive session. You receive sample wording for the two options available to the board under separate cover. If you plan to propose wording other than provided, please write out your motion in its entirety before reading it out loud. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I move that the board not hear Ms. Tad Polles and Ms. Pudinas' appeal to the administration's resolution.
Second? Okay. There has been moved by Judah and seconded by Therese. Is there any discussion about the motion? Remember, we cannot neither discuss nor provide details of what took place during executive session, but is there any discussion? Okay, so we will take a vote now, Sarah?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, the motion passes. You know, no say. You don't have to. Just for the public, it was, I didn't use the gavel is what we were laughing about. Okay, next, we have board member reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Okay. No board members?
It's summer.
It is summer, I know. Welcome back, everybody. And everybody's like, okay, thanks for welcoming us back, Lou. This is my first time in chairing a meeting fully, so thank you for bearing with me. And I'm excited to be back with you all, and it's not surprising, we don't have any reports because it is summer. And I know that Sammy sent out a report about the Oregon School Board Association and National School Board Association updates. Is there any questions for Sammy's report or anything you needed to add in, Sammy?
Just want to thank you, the reports in the packets, as part of frequent reports I share through my involvements with the National School Board Association, a specific director on their Board of Directors, and President-elect of Oregon School Board Association, OSBA. In the packets, there are some really interesting links about professional learning guidance and how that relates to ongoing professional developments versus the traditional professional developments, attending a session or training or seminar, and you go back without really continuous professional development opportunities while you do the work in the classroom. So I want to suggest looking at those, also some events, including the one happening tomorrow and Saturday this weekend, the summer conference. I believe Chris is going to be there, I'll be there. And if there's any questions, happy to answer those. And Judah? Awesome. Perfect.
Any questions for Sammy? No questions? Thanks, Sammy, for continuing to provide updates for us like you have been. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report.
All right. I had a couple of things that I wanted to highlight from summer to share with all of you, and then as we anticipate the start of school. So the first thing I wanted to share is that yesterday, a group of us had the opportunity to meet with a delegation from the Ukraine who were here for the week, spending some time at Oregon State, learning more about remote learning and online learning based on what's going on currently in the Ukraine. So we had the opportunity to talk about our experiences during COVID, while they have no similarities, in all honesty. The idea about remote learning and the things that we utilized during that time did have some relevancy for those educators who came. And so I wanted to recognize the team that was there yesterday. Kelly was with us, along with our three coordinators, Amy Leeson, Kim Johnson, and Nikki McFarland. Also, we had Byron Bethards there. Byron had done the Corvallis Online Program, so we talked about what that looked like. And then we also had Eric Wright there to talk about our alternative pathways and some of the ways that we think about supporting students who may have had some interrupted learning. And then Melissa was there, as well as myself. So sometimes you are in the midst of situations, and you think, when will this happen again? Or when will this have relevancy? And in this case, there were aspects that had relevancy where we were able to share our learnings with another group of people, coming through something that was really difficult, recognizing they're going through something currently that's really difficult. So I just wanted to share that with all of you. You know, we could have had anybody in the room. We could have had you in the room and your experiences as we moved through the pandemic as well. But more than anything, it was an opportunity for us to continue to build a relationship with our sister city and to share some information and some links so that they have access to some of the resources. I think probably one of the main points is their use of Canvas, which is our learning management system, and they're looking at the use of Canvas as a way to continue education. So that was one of the things I wanted to make sure that you all knew about, because again, it was an honor to meet with them and something that y'all remember for a long time. So I wanted to share that. The next thing I wanted to share is that in the month of July, I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC as part of the AASA, the American Superintendent Group. I'm part of their governance board, and that trip was specifically about going and meeting with our legislators, our legislators. So we met with all of the Oregon delegates, the members of the House, the members of the Senate, to talk about the importance of public education. We shared information about the way we used our relief dollars during the pandemic because we knew that there's sometimes questions about, where did those dollars go? How were they used? So we were able to share some success stories with that. We also talked about areas of ongoing funding, including IDEA and our title grants, because those come through the federal government. And then also talking about some modifications and changes to things like Medicaid and our federal food program. So again, it was, I think, the first time that that Oregon delegation had the chance to meet with the whole group, all of the representatives and senators, or one of their team members. So it felt great to be there. I went with the superintendents from Beaverton, Tiger, Tuawalton, and Umatilla. And Heidi from Umatilla also brought two students with her to talk about some of the programs and how they're impacted directly. So it was a really good trip, and I'm on that team for the next three years. So I'll be going every July to be able to continue to advocate for what we do in Oregon around public education. The next thing I wanted to share is something that I've sent out information to you about, and that's just that we ratified our, or have a tentative agreement with CEA as we move into the school year to have that contract approved. It will be coming to you in a special meeting on August 24th. It sets us up for a strong start to the school year. So again, thank you to the team, thank you to Sammy for participating, and Vince prior to Sammy. Again, I think in a lot of ways, having that taken care of, peace of mind allows people to move their focus back to students, transitioning back to school, and the important work ahead of us. So again, thanks for the support as we move through that process. A couple of upcoming events that I want to share with you. The first is we have the Health and Resource Fair coming up at Linus Pauling. We'll be sending out information to community members about that, but it is on, it's the third time we've done it, it's going to be on August 25th, from 8:30 to 3:30 at Linus Pauling. And some of the groups that will be there include Operation School Bell, which helps to support our students with clothing, dental, and hearing screenings, sports, physicals, kids' vaccines, including COVID-19, Backpack for Kids, Music, Dance, and Art. And so it's a fun event. We have many partners that come, including Samaritan, Casa Latina Junitos, IHNCCO. So we have, it's an important day, we've had really good turnout the last couple of years, and so it's festive and a great time for people to come together as we think about coming back to school. So if you have any time that day to stop by, I'd encourage you to do so. Otherwise, we'll provide information about it in the near future at a board meeting. Summer programming is just starting to wrap up. There's still a few more programs that are underway, but this summer, we had approximately 500 students participating in summer programming. Again, keeping in mind that those dollars came through the foundation, so those dollars to support summer programming came through high school success, which came through our funding mechanisms, but also so much from the foundation and the community. The foundation had a chance to tour some of our programs a couple of weeks ago, and we're just really excited to see what had happened. There'll be an opportunity to hear more about summer programming. We typically have a presentation by the team in about a month, and so they'll be able to tell you how many credit students earned, kind of a scope of the programs that happened, but just as a kind of an overarching summary, we had things like Kinder Academy, we had a sixth grade math camp, we supported students in our life skills program at CHS, another math camp for kids transitioning to ninth grade, high school credit recovery, our wing students were in summer school, we had a program for Latino youth, also our safe students in a wilderness camp that was through, for students at College Hill. So a lot of cool things happened, and I'm excited for them to be able to come and share those with you. I was there today at Credit Recovery, talking to kids, and one of the students says, I had so much fun this summer, I may not just, I might just not pass one class so I can come back next summer. And I said, that's not a good idea, but if you want to come back next summer, we can find a way to make that happen. So kids really enjoyed it, and so it really did have a camp vibe, and kids seemed to really, even when they were doing things that they needed to do to get caught up. Today, in particular, kids were feeling kind of that confidence and the relief of knowing they're coming back to school on track, and how that feels so much different than coming back, recognizing that you're coming back behind. So it was, there was a lot of enjoyment. We had some snow cones and some burritos, and it was a good day. Also, just a couple of other things, we have our new educator welcome on August 21st. Our new educators spend the first three days prior to everyone else coming back, meeting and talking about the culture of the school district. They have a chance to meet with their principal, visit their school, get a little bit of work done in their classrooms, meet their mentor. And we have about 30 new educators that will be participating in that program this year. So again, we'll have some new folks, not a huge number of new folks, but enough to continue to add to the culture and the vibrance of our school district. And then the last thing, as we return to the school year, you know, the first day of school is September 5th, but before that, we have our back-to-school rally, which is on August 29th. 8:30 to 10:00 in the morning is the rally at CHS, so if you're able to come and attend, that would be appreciated. Kim will be in touch just to check to see if you're able to attend or not, because we'd always want to recognize you. And again, it's one of those opportunities for us all to be back together in one space. There'll be some training in the afternoon, so people will stay on site. We'll have some options for lunch and some music. So again, we just want to be able to be back in community with all of our staff. So that is on the 29th, 8:30 to 10:00. You got a question?
What day was the Resource Fair again, please?
The one at Linus Pauling is on August 25th.
25th, thank you.
All right, those were the sort of the highlights of the things that have been going on this summer, and a couple of things to look forward to as we return to school.
Thanks, Ryan. Does anybody have any questions for Ryan or comments? Go ahead, Sammy.
Just want to acknowledge your leadership, Ryan, and all friends that you mentioned. Thank you for the reports. Few thoughts I want to share, really great to hear about this second summer to be successful, and look forward, whether it is for the board, just like last time, to learn more about it, or in any format you feel is appropriate to share what we have learned from this experience, and if there is any relatively longitudinal learning from two summers, and any opportunities for us to share that with the legislators in Salem, for obvious reasons, hopefully that they can step up to fund, and for our community with the foundation to continue fundraising for the programs whenever that's possible. Also, I want to, really excitement about collaboration, our partnership with the Ukrainian school districts, our schools, leaders, and I'm curious if there would be opportunities to facilitate cross-learning, virtual cross-learning, whenever that's possible for our educators, so for the kids to learn from each other across the globe. With that, thank you very much for the reports.
Any other questions or comments for Ryan? We're getting some blinds closed over here, so I'm procrastinating for a second for the next, while those are going down. Well, thank you, Ryan. Do you have one, Judah? Go ahead.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you, Ryan, for your report and all the work going on over the summer. I think sometimes people forget that stuff does happen over the summer, and there's lots coming up and lots of exciting announcements for the start of the school year too, which is right around the corner. So, yeah.
Yeah. And speaking of that, the next topic with the bond will be one of those other things that's been going on all summer that we're excited to finish up.
Yeah, sure. Okay, we have, do we have any?
We have no.
We have no public comment? So we have no public comments, so the, am I still supposed to open it and close it? There's none, huh? No, okay, I was just making sure. Thanks, community, for that moment. We don't have any public comment this evening, so now we're going to move to the bond update. Kim, are you reporting? Okay. And we'll have an opportunity to ask questions to Kim. The report was sent out and has been posted to Board Book as well, so I'm going to hand it over. Did you, are you showing anything or just answering questions?
Just answering questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Before we go to questions, there is one thing that I wanted to add.
Okay, just kidding, hold on.
Not a PowerPoint or anything, but I did want to point out that on the financial page, it is showing that our unallocated program reserves are negative 110, 107,000, pardon me. And I want to point out that we have very conservative forecasts, and those forecasts have not been updated through the work, and we do have some unrealized cost savings in our forecast that are going to cover that overage in unallocated reserves.
Thanks for answering the question that some folk had, Kim, before. Sammy, I see you have your, I'm muted.
Yeah, well, that's a good news, thank you. Really exciting to see everything here coming to close conclusion, really appreciate this work. I'm curious if, as we get to close to conclusion, if there is any celebrations, dedications that are going to happen that we can share with the community. dedications that are going to happen that we can share with the community to memorialize those reports. I know there are a lot, but to have them one place. There is so much wealth of information here. I would really appreciate if there's an opportunity for us to have that available in an accessible way for people. So really thank you for doing that. One thing I wanted to ask, and I wonder why I did not ask that before, but grants are allocated in two different places. And I'm wondering if there was any criteria, why we included some grants under other funding sources versus calling them out. And probably the simplest explanation I can think of is the OSCIM and Grant is one of the bigger grants. So you want to put that, call that out there. Is that the reason or there's another reason?
Yeah, and it's also a grant that has been there from the very beginning. And all of the other ones are much smaller amounts collectively. Olivia might have something to add to that, but the Awesome Grant is directly related to construction. And just for this purpose, the other ones, a lot of them are more reactive grants. So fun, energy funding, those types of things.
Wonderful. So maybe if I can ask, whenever we come to the conclusion, is, you know, that kind of a pie chart of telling the voters, you gave us the 199 and this is how much we got from other sources?
Yeah, we can do a summary of that. I have talked to Ryan about doing a report back to the board about how we've met all the goals of the bond program. And that could be a good item that we could bring back during that presentation.
Yes, thank you so much.
Also working on final, as we wrap up the bond program, looking at our bond website and how to memorialize that, all of the projects in a way that's more of a wrap-up and a summary. And so I'm working with Kelly Lacy on that.
Wonderful, thank you. Oh, one more thing. Are we presenting at NSBA or OSBA again?
We hadn't planned to do the bonds and ballots again related to the construction, but we always could. Because I think we do have a compelling story and ways that we've gone about this process in a different manner than many other districts have. So every time we get a chance to share, we, we get positive feedback. I know that Kim has also done some one-on-ones with the, both the architectural firms and our project managers and construction teams to talk about the way that we went about it. And has had some really positive feedback as well. So, yeah, as we think about the day that we come to present to you all and some of the themes that we want to make sure that we incorporate as we think about the ways that we've engaged the community in particular, through our design advisory committees. I think that that would be something that would be valuable to share here, but probably something we could share more broadly. And then in response to your question about things that are upcoming that help to memorialize what's happened, we do, there will be a celebration at College Hill at some point this fall, recognizing that the building is 100 years old. And when you walk through it, you'll have no idea that that being the case, however, a celebration of that, of that space. So there's some community members that are sort of leading that charge. But it will be an opportunity to celebrate once again.
And certainly we have consultants that, architects, contractors, that are wanting to share our story out at some of the venues that you talked about. And so we'll take them up anytime we get to tell about it.
I'm so excited that my very first board meeting, that the first thing I get to say is, wow. I really applaud you, Kim, for all the work that you have done on this. I know that most of us will never know what all you have done to oversee and to be in charge of all of this. It's amazing. Just as I drive by some of the schools and see what's going on, it's, it's been very impressive. I want to know when we get to go on a tour. Is there going to be any opportunities for us as a school board to tour the schools?
I can give you a tour whenever you want, Chris, or for any of the school board members. If there are specific tours that you're interested in, I think College Hill would be a fun one to tour because it is such a drastic difference. Honestly, Franklin would be a good one to go, go back and tour. So I would be happy to work on some schedules for board member tours for any of the sites that you'd be interested in touring. So maybe I'll work with Kim to put out a poll. What, what do you want to see? And we will get it scheduled.
I just wanted to make a request as we wrap up this work that we set aside a moment in a future board meeting where we can invite the folks who served on the bond liaison committee to come and get some recognition for their, all of their hard work. I know that committee has had not as much turnover as you might think for as long as the committee has been in place. So anyway, so that's just a request that we create an opportunity to do that.
So Therese, I was planning when we do our wrap-up report that we would invite them to do a final report from the bond oversight committee also. You're going to have to dedicate a whole meeting. I'm just teasing.
Any other questions or comments for Kim? Well, thank you, Kim. And the, like Ryan said, more summer work that's been going on that people may not know is happening. And it's amazing to see it all. Looking forward to seeing some of the schools too, especially seeing them in different phases. So, yeah, thank you for arranging those too.
Yeah, no problem. I'll look forward to it.
Alrighty. Next on our agenda is the bias report. And Melissa is doing that?
Yes, Melissa's doing that. Marcyann will come up next and talk about equity.
Yeah, welcome.
So I submitted a report to the board that gives some updated stats. And this is in response to requests that we check these stats at least, you know, every half year to see how everything is progressing with bias and bias reporting. So if, I'll take questions, but I also wanted to point out a couple of things. The first is that what we're noticing is that the work of the BERT, which is the Bias Incident Response Team, is going to morph a little bit this year to start working on some strategies to, to, to collect qualitative data about what's happening with bias reports. I'm really interested in hearing kind of what we were learning at the COSA conference last week, that street-level data of why students are, are or are not reporting when it comes to bias and what their experience has been around that. And I would like to, to work with principals, both middle school, high school, and then have some conversations with elementary principals too about what that's looking like in their building. So that's something that I know that Marcyann and I have talked about quite a bit. I also wanted to celebrate Marcyann, even though she's not presenting here. She did a ton of work over the summer to put together those bias response educational toolkits, which are now available to all of our principals to work with students. When they're the student causing harm in a bias incident, they can look for the category. The principal can find the category of, of bias and have lots of things kind of in their hands to help work with students to talk about why, why we don't use the R-word and where that comes from and why, why that would be so impactful. So Marcyann did all of that work. And I think as part of the BERT, we're really happy to have that. But if you have questions, I'm happy to answer some.
Questions? Sammy, you keep.
Okay, I'll go for a couple of questions. The first question is, how can the board support this work? I am, first of all, thank you. This is really well-written report. Shows your systemic change and systematically applying what we know and what we don't know. And how can we get to know what we don't know? And it's really important, this work. Also giving us what actions you're doing right away. So really thank you on that front. Now, what support do you need from the board?
I appreciate being held accountable to bringing this information to you. So thank you for that. It really gives me an opportunity to reflect on what we've done, what maybe isn't happening, and ask some of those important questions. I spoke to our leadership team on Tuesday about what the data was going to look like tonight. And wanted just to kind of give them some context about why this work needs to continue. So I appreciate that opportunity. I feel your support all the time. I'm lucky enough to sit here every board meeting and know that you're 100% in support of the work that we're doing around racial equity. So I feel that and I just would want that to continue.
Thank you. Speaking of the street level, sometimes we hear from students or families. And while we have to maintain our impartiality, given complaints might arise to us. But in, in light of the bias response system, if someone mentions stories of bias, what's the best way for us to say, this is what you could do as a, as a student, a parent, or a staff member to address bias in, in general terms? What's their, what's our recommendation? Usually we say, talk to the lowest-level teacher or principal. Does that still apply here or is there a better way to phrase it?
I think it's always best to have those kinds of conversations first. But if you don't really feel like as a parent or a student, you're getting the traction that you're hoping for, that, that's the, that's the, all of the reasoning behind the bias response system. The fact that you can go into a Google form, you can enter all of that information. Because now we have eyes on it and we're making sure that there's a response and that there's an investigation and a response and communication. So if, if a parent doesn't feel like they're getting the response they want, they should put it into the Bias Incident Report System and we're going to absolutely follow up. There's just no way around it. It's, it's there for us to do. There's accountability there too.
Thank you.
I think what we're going to do is work with elementary teams, principals and behavior teams. Because the incidents are occurring, definitely. So where, I'm wondering where the gap is. Our elementary teachers are trained, everybody's trained actually, and we'll be doing that again in September, on how to use the bias response system. So if an incident happens, a student comes and tells you this thing happened on the playground, yes, you deal with it, but we also put it into the system and report it so that we know and can keep track of data. With that in mind, it doesn't feel like that was happening to the extent that it probably should have last year in elementary. So I'd like to talk to principals and staff to find out what was the barrier there. I think I, I wrote that in there because what we have at middle school and at high school, kids are on their Chromebooks and it's a button on their Canvas page. So they can easily go in and they can type up what it is that's happening to them. With elementary students, they're still that, you might need the assistance of an adult. And if they don't feel comfortable having that assistance from somebody at school, that tells us something. But also, are they telling their parents? And do their parents not know that there's a place, like Sammy pointed out, that they could get some answers? So that's what we really want to dig into, I think, this year when it comes to elementary. This is something that we were trying to address with middle schools this last year by changing the lunch so that there's not, there's two lunches. So that way there's fewer students and that kind of, not unsupervised, but just a little more free time. That kind of thing can happen. We, that is something that we are going to take up with BERT and have a conversation about when it comes to middle schools especially. I think that's where that's happening is at lunchtime in our middle schools. And the data on hallways and cafeteria is new because I think we previously had had a plate, like a button for other than the classroom. And we started to kind of hone in, like, well, where is that happening? Because the number was growing. And so with that, we were seeing it's happening in the hallway and the cafeteria. So that helps us to talk to elementary, no, I'm sorry, not elementary, but to administrators about supervision and making sure there's an adult, an adult present that students can go to if they're, you know, having a problem in one of those spaces.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm curious about, in the breakdown of who is reporting, 50% are students.
Yes.
And then there's quite a few staff. And I'm curious about if staff are reporting incidents related to students or related to themselves or both?
Staff are reporting incidents that are coming to them from students.
From students.
A student may have come to them and said, this XYZ happened.
Okay.
Some of our staff are reporting about incidents with other staff. So we're dealing with that as well. And it's kind of, it, it goes a different trajectory, but we, we work with that too.
Okay, I was curious if you could say more about that in terms of some of the resources that might be in place. I know we've heard a lot over time about resources that are in place for students or for staff to have conversations with students and help them develop different pathways to go down, whether something ends up in the bias report system or resolved in another way. What are some of the supports that are offered to staff who may have some of these experiences?
We, when we have, when we have a staff-to-staff issue, that's something that's going to happen with the support of our Human Resources Department. But we're also going to lean heavily on all of the work that we've done with courageous conversations about race so that we can enter into those conversations in a way that we're listening, understanding where we're coming from, listening to the other person and where they're at. We can always call in some of our staff who are a little more expert at these kinds of mediations. And I'm looking at Marcyann because she would be one. And then for our staff who, you know, have had, who have, who are struggling with that, we always have resources with mental health staff as well as our EAP, which we can access through Human Resources for staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, good.
I have a couple of questions. When we look at outside school hours and the 13.9% that occurs in various places, is that ever, are we ever looking directly at sporting events?
We had a few sporting events. This is honestly, when I think about, sorry, anecdotally about this, this is a lot of bus incidents. Yeah.
So is there a way we can look closer at sporting events type incidents?
Yeah, they're hard. They're a lot harder because you've got a lot of kids. And we had a few incidents during sporting events, not just at the high school level, but also at middle school. So it's that conversation about how do we extend that learning and understanding about that these rules apply throughout, the way we treat each other doesn't just stop when the school bell rings.
Right. And do coaches get the same training?
Coaches get even more training when it comes to this because they're also being trained on, you know, how to work with students who are on a 504 or an IEP. They also receive a lot of training on our Title IX rules. But, but in addition, they are trained on bias and how to interrupt bias.
That's great. Also, I think it was in the report, or maybe it was on some previous information we received about student allies and how strong of an effort that is. And I love all the work that you and Marcyann have done around the SAFE group because that is building an ally group with people and that is how kids respond. Are we doing more work around, building more systems around kids and having allies?
I would turn to Marcyann as some of the work that she would be doing with SAFE. And she's going to talk a little bit about SAFE later. But that's the place where we see our allies incredibly strong. I think we even mentioned in it here that the large number of reports in the middle school have a lot to do with two very strong SAFE groups who are, they're not going to put up with injustice and they will report it and they'll make sure that something is done about it. Thank you.
I, you recall that you mentioned that you're looking at collecting qualitative information. I was wondering if you might be able to provide now? Or if not, can we request a summary of kind of what your plan of action will be for collecting that data? And what tool, like how, what's going to be your process for how you're going to get that information and?
I don't have those plans now, but I'm happy to bring that forward when it's time. Marcyann happens to be the queen of student voice. And so she and I will work together. We're reading together as a leadership team, the book from Shane Safir called The Listening Leader. She also writes, wrote Street Data, which is what we were talking about with the COSA conference and how to collect that data, how to listen to students, how to conduct those empathy interviews. So I'm going to actually be leaning heavily on that for my own personal work.
Okay.
But I'll bring you more information when I have it.
That would be great. This is a really rich opportunity. And we have, you know, we have a unique opportunity to do it in a manner that would allow us to really have some rigor behind that and really be able to share widely what those findings are. And so a lot of that will be upfront work before you ever even begin collecting those stories. And so I've just, you know, you know this board, so we love to know those things.
Country researchers, I love it.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple too, so I was just making sure everybody got through theirs. I think that, that what you mentioned about the hallways is really important because that's that one space, like historically, where a lot of stuff happens. And so having that outlined is great that you're going to be doing that. I know, excuse me, I emailed you about the, how the numbers compared to the year prior. And if we've seen, I know we've seen an increase in reports, right?
Right. Right. And I, so I have the reports and report categories from the year before. So this would be 21, 22. We only had 13 total bias reports that year. And 10 of them were about racial language and three of them were gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. So when you compare that 13 to, is it 134 total reports? It's made a huge difference being able to report, making it easier to report. Remembering that in 21, 22, in order to report bias, you had to take yourself to the office to find an administrator to file that report. And in this way, that part, that barrier is removed so students can file the report and then the follow-through will happen from there.
Thank you for having that comparative number. I think that's really important for us as a board to know the impact of this change in the bias reporting. And just for Chris and Judah, too, some of the changes were directly linked to listening to students in SAFE meetings, too, about the reporting process. And so I just wanted to let you all know that that's part of where that change came from and how important it is that we listen to any of our processes and policies. And if they're not supporting students and staff in the way that we intend them to, that it's important to make changes like we've done here with this report. And I know some people think that there's no point in reporting bias, but I think like what you're showing, there's a lot of things to learn about what's going on in the schools and help shape our policies and our trainings. And it's not teaching students and staff to kind of tell on each other. It's giving students and staff tools they didn't have before. And it's also helping students learn how to self-advocate because even taking the step to fill out that form can be scary for some people because they don't know what happens to it and they may not have told that story to somebody before or felt heard before. And so I think it's super awesome that they are being heard. One thing that I did notice, and I had a question about, with the data that you presented, it seemed like there was a lot of anti-blackness showing up. And I know there's a lot of trainings around diversity. And I'm looking over at Marcia, too. And I'm wondering if there's some training specifically around anti-blackness that are happening in the schools yet or if there's plans for that to happen?
Not yet, but that's something that we need to take a look at and talk about, for sure.
Okay, yeah, because I think it's showing what students and community members have been telling us is reflected in this data. And so it's showing, that was the whole point, like, we need to have a training on anti-blackness in particular. So thank you. Those were, that was my main question, those two, and then my rambling comments. So thank you. Thanks for all your work on this and for the report. And thanks, Marcia, too, for your efforts around this and the rest of the team that reviews them. Oh, yeah, sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
No, just the fact that we've had input from students and we've also had input from families and community, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so definitely has allowed this process to become stronger as we've shared it. And ideas have come from those conversations in terms of next steps for us, too.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, for pointing that out. Okay, cool. Well, thank you, Melissa. And next, we have our equity update with Marcia. And you're doing a presentation, right, Marcia? Okay. Look, we were right on time with that timer, Kim. I feel like the tech is your nemesis sometimes, Marcia. Hopefully, it works for you.
Okay, we're good. Can you see the screen? Yes. All right, we're good. Well, good afternoon, everybody. So great to see this amazing board. As I was sitting back there, I was just so grateful that we have two new board members. And Lou, you're doing a great job already. So tonight, my name's Marcia and nice to see some new faces. And the role that I have is one that I'm really passionate about. So I oversee our multilingual programs and also our equity and dual-language programs. And just so fortunate to work in such an amazing district. And so in the spring, when I was asked to do an update on SAFE, I asked Ryan, how much time do I have? Because I could talk about student voice forever. So tonight, I won't take up too much of your time, but I really felt it was important to give you almost a bird's eye view of what SAFE is, what the focus is, what the vision is, some of the projects that the students are working on so you can get a really nice picture of what these amazing students are doing. And so that's what I'm going to do tonight. I've got a video as well that I'm going to share with you and hopefully tech works for that. And I also have, I always believe in the power of pictures. So I was able to put some pictures that we've collected over the years, over the year, to share with you tonight so that way you can kind of see what we're up to. Does that sound good? All right. Yeah, and the other thing before I start, I also wanted to just express deep gratitude to so many people. SAFE did not happen in isolation. And I think if, I'm sitting here in front of you tonight, but I really think of all the people that have put so much time and effort into SAFE. And I would have to say our Equity TOSAs, our SAFE mentors at all our schools, the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, who gave us our first grant of $900, which at the time didn't seem like a lot, but it made such an impact. I want to thank the school board and our leadership for supporting SAFE over the years and not only being present at some of our SAFE meetings, but just always bringing the student voice up to the community, but also something that's important to us. I want to thank our administrators for being part and encouraging and also supporting SAFE at their schools. And I'm sure there's other people I want to thank, but just really deeply want to thank them. But most importantly, I want to thank the students. I will come back. It's me today, but next time, I promise I'm going to bring students. So get prepared. All right, so here we go. When I was thinking about tonight, we can't be talking about student voice unless we talk a little bit about, or at least do some reflection about our own experiences as students ourselves, right? And so I just wanted for you to think, just kind of in your head, around your elementary, middle, and high school experience. And just think about what that experience was like for you. Think about maybe a mentor or mentors or teachers that supported you. Think about, did those folks see you? Did they, did you feel in the spaces that you grew up in, in the schools that you were attending, did you feel a sense of belonging and connection? And when you think about the sense of belonging and connection at your school, was that in a sport? Was it in a club? And for some of us, we had folks that saw us. We had community to be a part of. We had mentors and teachers that saw us. But I also know the reverse is true. For many of us, school, growing up, was not a place of connection, was not a place of belonging. And for some of us, when I ask this question, they kind of scratch their head, like, I can't think of a teacher. Or I can think of a teacher. Or I can't think of a place where I felt truly myself. And so SAFE is a place for our students of color, our Black, Indigenous, and students of color to be in a place of community, to be in a place where they can call home, to be in a place where there's bravery in speaking up and speaking out. And so we are working really hard every single year to make this a really special place for students. And so tonight, I'm going to share some pictures. I'm going to share a video. But I'm also going to share some of the passion projects that our students have come up with that have been completely created by them. Okay, so you ready for this? Yes, okay, all right. So the timeline, timeline, kind of cool. So back in 2016, think about what was happening in our nation at the time and think about where we were, right, as educators and community members. The growth and the natural progression of SAFE started organically. And I think it started from a couple of different places. But the one notable place where SAFE started was we went as an administrative group down to a conference in Eugene. And I was looking through the pamphlet and thinking about, oh, when am I going to attend? It was an equity conference. And there was this one session that was about student voice. And so myself and an assistant principal at the time were like, well, just go see this session and see what's going on. We walk into this session and it was filled, right? Like 100 people in this room. And myself and the assistant principal were sitting in the back of the room. It was hot, kind of like it is right now. And I was expecting adults to lead this seminar, this session. And I'm looking around and all of a sudden, there's these students that started speaking at this session. And there was about 10 of them. And the whole hour and a half was led by students. And the teachers, you could tell that they were really proud of their students. They just were standing back like proud parents. And for an hour and a half, these students were unapologetic of who they are. They were all students of color. They had voice, they had agency, they had vision. And it was the most beautiful thing I had seen in the 20-some years that I've been in education. So that was the spark. And so we came back to Corvallis and we were like, we need to somehow replicate this. We didn't know what the heck we were doing, but we knew that we needed to create these spaces for our students because it was really, really special. So we did invite the teacher at the time to come and meet with us and kind of tell us, show us the ropes of what we needed to do. And she was really wonderful in sharing her ideas. So we started small. We started with high school students. And we started with eight students per high school, so a total of 24 students. We had students from College Hill, students from CHS, and students from Crescent Valley. And we met in the boardroom that is now open again. And these 24 students, they were led by three SAFE coaches. There were teachers at their school. And these teachers were really special because these teachers were teachers that students could identify with, teachers that really cared for them and that the teachers really felt a connection to. So we started small. One of the things that I remember is the students would come to the boardroom. They had, you could tell that they were really excited about SAFE, but they had never been in the, and again, these are high school students. In the years that they'd been in the Corvallis School District, they had never really been in a space of affinity. Think about it, 13, 12 to 13 years, but they had never had that experience. So I remember doing the first session, just having an agenda and expecting all these kids to talk about things that were meaningful to them. And it was like crickets. And so I realized very quickly is that we needed to create the conditions for student dialogue. And so I'll be talking about that in a minute. As years went on, as you can see in the timeline, 2020, we added our middle school students. And if you remember middle school, this is a time where you're just trying to figure out who you are, the multiple identities, you know, you're trying to figure out where you belong. And so we did include Sheldon in middle school, Franklin, and Linus Pauling. And then lastly, this past year, these last two years, we heard from, again, student voice, our high school and middle school students were saying, I have a sibling that attends Garfield Elementary or I have a sibling that attends Bessie Coleman. I wish that my sister or my brother could have a SAFE group at their school. And that's what we did with the support of the school and the school board. We started SAFE groups at the elementary level. And so right now, we do have a SAFE group and SAFE mentors at every single school. Yes, so very exciting. So I could talk for hours about what SAFE is, but I want to show you a video. These students, I do want to say cuteness alert. You're going to see a lot of great, beautiful students talking about what SAFE means to them. It's about a two-minute video. But I will go ahead and play the video and you can hear from their voice what SAFE means to them. I hope technology works. Can't hear it. Let's see. I think I know what I did. Hold on.
Is there captions on there, too, Marcia?
Yes. It's playing here. Richard? See, I knew something would happen. I think I know what I did. What's that, Josh?
Did you do the video?
I probably forgot to do that. Hold on one second.
I don't remember where.
Yeah, I'll maybe back out.
Can you go camera one?
Stop sharing?
Yeah, stop sharing.
Okay, all right. And then I'll share screen. And there we go. I think that'll do it. Okay. Okay, there we go.
What is SAFE?
SAFE stands for Students Advocating for Equity.
I'm here. Let's start over.
What is SAFE?
SAFE stands for Students Advocating for Equity. Advocating means standing up for something. And equity means that everyone gets what they need.
Oh, my goodness. Let's start over.
Your own mic? Yeah, your mic is on. So we don't get feedback from you.
It's still on.
It's the one on the tabletop, Marcia.
What is SAFE?
SAFE stands for Students Advocating for Equity. Advocating means standing up for something. And equity means that everyone gets what they need.
SAFE is a group of students who are people of color to talk about our culture, race, and identity.
SAFE is a place where people can feel comfortable sharing things about themselves and not be judged.
Who defines the SAFE meaning?
Students of color or students who are not white.
Students who are safe, respectful, and responsible.
Students from many different backgrounds.
Why do we have SAFE in our schools?
To learn more about different cultures.
To talk about our backgrounds and spread awareness about diversity.
To show that we care about each other.
To create a community for students who come from different backgrounds.
Where do SAFE groups exist?
Corvallis Elementary, Middle School, and High Schools.
High school students in Corvallis started SAFE because they wanted everyone's cultures to be represented.
Where do we live to have SAFE?
You get to respect other schools' cultures.
Feel trips.
When someone is talking, we are respectful and listen.
We work as a team.
We do projects and come up with ideas.
We get to learn about people's history.
We get to eat lunch together.
We talk about our cultures.
We can share about problems and make ways to prevent and deal with them.
We welcome many different kinds of people.
Isn't that amazing? Great kids. And I loved watching your faces as you were watching the video. So those were students from LaTicea Carson. And they created that video, they wrote the script. And again, the SAFE mentor just facilitated the process. But they wanted to have a video that they could share within their school to be able to invite other students to join SAFE next year. So I thought they did a really good job of encapsulating what SAFE is all about. So here is a picture of that first group that I told you about. You can see it's kind of a small, small group and it has since then expanded. But just as a student from LaTicea said, you know, the goal of SAFE is to create brave spaces for discussion. And something that I've noted over the years is that students are really ready to talk about current events and the things that are important to them. And we just need to step aside and let them do that, but also give them the language and provide support as they engage in difficult conversations. One of the things also that I have loved about SAFE is that they've built a lot of friendships, not only within their school, but also cross schools. And pre-pandemic, one of the things that we really wanted to do is to give students an opportunity to visit another school. So for example, one SAFE meeting we would have at CV and all the students would go to CV. And it really gave the students an opportunity, who had not attended CV, to get to see a school that they hadn't seen before. So that was pretty cool. In terms of connection, we are pretty organized in terms of how often we meet. And so at every SAFE meeting, teachers and mentors meet with their students on a weekly basis during lunch or advisor. And so And it's an opportunity to check in and ask questions or learn something new. The other thing that's been pretty cool that we did, started this year's feeder-school collaboration. Try saying that five times fast. And the cool thing about that is that we know that students, for example, from Garfield are going to be going to Linus Pauling. And we know that Linus Pauling students are going to be going to CHS. And so the feeder-school collaboration allows students to visit the school next. And so they work on projects together. There's embedded mentorship, which is really cool. End-of-year transitions. End-of-year transitions are pretty important for us because it allows 5th grade students, as they're moving into middle school, 8th grade students as they're moving into high school, to visit their, their next school. And so the SAFE students from the other school host the younger students. And so it's great mentorship and so that transition is really cool. The one that I'm also really excited about is our quarterly meetings. And I want to thank Lou and Shawna and Sammy for attending the quarterly meetings. These quarterly meetings are secondary meetings where we have all students meet either at CV or CHS. And they are student-led. They create the PowerPoint on their own. They do an icebreaker at the beginning. They also talk about what's on top. And when we ask that question is we are asking students to talk about what's, what's top of mind for you? What are you curious about? What do you want to know more about? We have had, Kimmy and I would make a great pair. The other thing that I'm really excited about is during the pandemic, when our high school students were meeting in Zoom, we continued SAFE during the pandemic. We were meeting in Zoom. I could see that the students were just missing some fun, right? And so we started encouraging multiple perspectives and people from the community to come and be at our SAFE meetings. Folks that are leaders in the, in the community. And so we've had, over the course of the last couple of years, some amazing presenters. One of the first ones that we had was Darius Northern. And he is the CEO of People of Color. Quick little story. During the pandemic, I remember just thinking, there's somebody that we need to have that can really encourage these students. And I remember sending him an email on his website, thinking, he's never going to respond. He's too busy. Two weeks later, he said, I'd love to meet your SAFE students. So with Zoom, I think he might have been in another state. He was able to zoom in and, and meet our students. We've had Yanni Alvarez, who was one of our first SAFE students. She presented at our last SAFE meeting. We've had Dr. Johnny Lake come and talk to the students. We've had board members come and talk to the students about the board role and how they can advocate for themselves and for their peers. And we also with the think, with the support of Lou, we had Olmecca just not too long ago. And he is an amazing hip-hop artist, scholar, poet and everything in between. So thank you, Lou, for that. It made a big impact on our students. Advocacy. Advocacy, we talked about that earlier when Melissa was talking about the biased response. It's something that we want to really encourage our students is to speak from their heart and speak, speak what they believe. And so part of the advocacy that our students do is working on passion projects. So here's a picture of our students at Linus Pauling. They had created a periodic table during Women's History Month. And so all of those pictures there are women that they had studied and researched. And they had created this beautiful periodic table. And that was all student-made. Student panels and murals. And I know you've seen some of these student murals at your, at Linus, at CHS and CV. And then we've also had year-long campaigns. And the year-long campaign that happened at CHS was around stopping hate speech. And students, again, did a lot of, they did a lot of publicizing of it, communicating with their peers. And hopefully, peer-to-peer, they were able to help each other learn to be better humans. Another advocacy point for our students is they are oftentimes asked to or participate in assemblies, art projects, peer teaching and fundraisers. And the fundraiser that happened that it was most, I think, touching and beautiful was a fundraiser back in May, which was for the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls and Two Spirits 5K Fund Run. And Lou was able to speak at that. So that was amazing. Collaboration. Collaboration is at the heart of student voice. Not only students collaborating with one another, but making sure that we're supporting our students as they learn to engage in courageous conversations and difficult conversations. So in our meetings, we teach students how to ask each other and have dialogue instead of a monologue. We spend a lot of time talking about language. What does, what's the difference between equity and equality when we talk about implicit bias? What do we mean by that? Just really making sure that we're providing background. A lot of time celebrating our identities, community building. And here's a picture of some students at Catherine Jones Harrison. And so again, you could tell that they're, they've built a beautiful community. And then impact. Lou, you mentioned this earlier. Our students have been instrumental in providing voice to not only in their school, but more district-wide. The board listening sessions that you all participated in last year was amazing. Giving input to the biased response process, the student handbook, during the bond, the gender-neutral bathrooms and so on. These were just some examples of many. They're making a strong impact. And then what's next? This is the last slide, I promise. What's next? So I, we want to continue to expand SAFE. It's currently 4th grade up to 12. We want to expand it to the younger, younger students. We want to really strategize and have an intentional youth mentorship program in our school. Right now, it's happening naturally, but we want to make sure that we provide training for students so they know what it is to be a mentor. A dream of mine, I aspire to, is to someday, maybe with the host, the support of OSU and community partners, is to host a regional youth leadership conference. Wouldn't that be cool to have something in our backyard? And then another aspiration or dream that I have is to involve our students at the grassroots level of our Youth Truth Survey. Giving them opportunities to participate in some workshops. Giving them opportunities to analyze data, meaningful data that's important to them. And then to set goals and create action plans. So it's one thing asking them, you know, what do you believe in terms of answering these surveys? But for them to actually get involved would be really cool. And then I think that's it. I've gone over time. But I just want to thank you for this opportunity. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thanks, Marcyann. I know when we started the agenda, we had a certain amount, but we were like way ahead. So I feel like we have plenty of time for question and answer for Marcyann. If folk have questions and comments, which we usually do. Sammy, go ahead. I don't know. You raised your hand already. Oh, wait. Okay, hold on. Brian wants to say something first.
I think one of the things we did intentionally tonight, as we built the agenda, is we started by talking about our biased response process and the work we have to do. And we follow, we're following that up intentionally in terms of some of the work that's happening in our school district. So that wasn't by chance. It was intentional. So as you're asking questions, I'd want you to be thinking about both presentations and the context that that provides you as, as leaders of our district.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, go ahead, Sammy.
Thank you. Just want to share my continued appreciation for the program. And seeing SAFE hoodies and t-shirts across town, it makes me really excited. I always introduce myself for, to students and former students. And I'm really proud to hear their stories. One thing that I'm curious about for the steps forward is possibilities of organic presentation of priorities that our students see. And for them to really have this struggle that we, we deal with on the board between issues that we might encounter in our own stories and our lives and incidents as well, into what should the SAFE group as a group or students as a collective elevate as top priorities? So it might inform the board, one way or the other, about emerging top priorities for policy, transformational policies. They've been very empowering the board in the racial equity policy. And that was a great experience. And I think that was also a commitment from the board that we need to pass that, but also commitments from you, Marcyann, and district leadership that we were going to involve SAFE group in vetting the policy. And I'm curious about what's next in terms of how can we elevate those priorities and have them empowered to go all the way from sharing lived experiences and what they see in this, on the school level into elevating what should be district-wide policies?
Yeah, I think having time and space to have that conversation and ask the students what it is that is a priority to them is really important. And earlier, when Melissa was talking about empathy interviews, I think that that's where we're going to get a lot of those prioritized themes for students, what's important to them. It would be also interesting to see if there's any correlation between what elementary students are saying, middle school students and high school students. And be able to ask them, you know, what's, what's working and what isn't? And what are our blind spots? And what can we do better? And a lot of the projects that you see that students saying, I, we want to see things better. So those passion projects, I think, are a beautiful representation of what they want to see changed. And so again, I think this year it'll be wonderful to be able to ask and spend time with them and ask them what is important to you. And as adults, really listen and, and change accordingly. Thank you, Sammy.
Thanks.
I'm going to go ahead and take the bait. Superintendent, my mom's a teacher. I know what you're doing. I, I want to point out that when we see this increase of bias report, that that's a marker of success for what we're trying to do in our district. And every time a student reported to an adult or self-reported, that was them putting their confidence in the district that things could be better. That this doesn't have to happen anymore. And I want to share my gratitude for your thoughtfulness. And just, I was blown away. We said this presentation could be longer. And I was thinking, don't threaten me with a good time. You know, I, I, I'm so grateful to continue to work. And however, you know, the board can, can be of support. I, I am blown away and really excited to hear about the growth and all these fabulous projects the students were doing. And the video that they produced themselves was fabulous. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jada.
Thank you so much, Marcyann. It was wonderful to hear your presentation. And having been to some of the quarterly SAFE meetings, just as a board member, it's been so meaningful to see the impact firsthand of SAFE for students. Two things I just wanted to follow up on. One, I know that you shared as you were getting into your presentation too. You said, next time you come, you'll bring students with you. I think we'd love to follow up with that at some point during the year. I know this is such a challenging time to have this update in the meeting, as excited as we are about it and love hearing your words and everything that you've shared too. And I know how much students have said that they would love to come and be able to, to share, to follow up, to, to be able to share some of their projects. And I think even speaking to what you shared, Sammy, or asked around where they see need or what students think some of those priorities are. They're so eager and ready to share and have so many ideas. It's incredible, the leadership that's being cultivated for students. And something else that I have heard come up several times now in SAFE meetings as well is students saying, these conversations are so important. And, and recognizing that having SAFE is a really precious and important space for students, particularly students of color. And the additional message that students are, are asking for themselves of saying, we think everyone in our schools needs to be having these same conversations. And so I'm curious about what other spaces are these same topics being discussed? Or is there a plan for expanding that so that schools are also, in addition to having SAFE as a, as a safe space, extending those conversations out to all students in the school community? And that then links into the biased incident report too, in terms of prevention.
Yeah. Great question. Couple of things I want to share is that SAFE is one of many places that we want to make sure that these conversations are happening in the classroom and throughout the school. So our, a couple of things that come to mind is our racial equity lessons that we've talked about in the past. Those are a wonderful springboard to be able to talk about identity, diversity, action and justice. And so we spend a lot of time training our teachers to be able to be comfortable being uncomfortable in the classroom, right? I think that's key. Is that education, maybe the experiences that they had when they were in elementary, middle school, it wasn't typical to talk about race or to talk about culture or ethnicity. But through these racial equity lessons, we are normalizing these conversations. So that's one space. The other space is, is really ensuring that our teachers, that are, are building leaders, for example, are modeling this work at their school sites. I think that's really important. So that, yes, we can spend a lot of time on the technical, but we also need to spend time getting to know one another and understanding our backgrounds and what's important to us. So normalizing that is really important. The other thing that I would add is that at, at least at the elementary school, we have a collaborative classroom, so CCC. And there's a community circle that happens at every, every single morning in all our elementary schools. So if you've ever done some walkthroughs, it's kind of the funnest times of day because they're all sitting together. But we have community circles in every single classroom, including our dual-language schools. And the purpose behind those community classrooms is to be in community. That I may be suffering with something, but it's a we, not an I. And so really teaching those skills of caring for one another. And then when there is an issue in the classroom, being able to talk about it in community is really important. That's what I love about that, that curriculum. And I think just ongoing, ongoing conversations that provide space for this type of conversation, not only as adults, because we have to be comfortable talking about it. If we're not comfortable, how are we going to talk about these things with our students? So those are just a couple of places that I can think of, Shawna. But I think to have it just be in one spot is, is not effective. So the more we can expand it, almost like concentric circles throughout our schools, it would be wonderful. Because ideally, wouldn't it be great if our students can say, actually, I feel really safe no matter where I am in my school? But we know that's not the case. So, yeah. Thanks, Shawna.
Just to add into that really quick, I know a certain SAFE student who, I've seen some of their presentations for the whole school that are shown through advisories. So I think that's another place where they're taking what they're learning in SAFE, the SAFE leaders, and creating content for their peers. And I think that's really powerful too, that they're like talking about what are microaggressions? And how do we talk about these things? And just being able to see that editing mode going down and knowing that it's going to go out to other classes, I think is really cool too. So just wanted to add that into, Marcyann, real quickly.
That's true.
Yeah. Did you have any other questions, Sarah? Go ahead.
Yeah, and I can, you know, share that as a high schooler, as the parent of a, well, former high schooler who is not in SAFE, those lessons and things that happen in advisor have generated conversations at home. So they are, like, we're making an impact, not only on those students who are there, benefiting from the knowledge of their, their peers, but then taking that home and having those discussions at home that are, can be really powerful there too. So it's, I think this, this, these SAFE groups have, you know, just an immense impact on the students who are involved. But their impact then, really, you know, those concentric circles really are expanding out. And it's, you're becoming a more powerful thing, community-wide. So thank you for all of that work.
Thank you, Sarah.
I would just echo that that is happening at the middle school level as well. As the parent of a middle schooler who is not formally in participating with SAFE, but who's very good friend is, I hear a lot about the conversations between them. I hear them having their conversations in my living room and it sparks conversations with us. And so I think that that peer-to-peer, that transfer of, of knowledge is just so huge. And so I'm immensely grateful because I know that if I were to sit down and say, let's have this conversation about, you know, we would not have nearly, Mom, why do we have to do this? But when they sit down and have those conversations, it becomes, you know, it's really organic. And so I'm incredibly grateful for the, the benefit of being, you know, just even tangential to people that are, are immediately doing that work. We see that benefit. I think that's something we can definitely scaffold. We see that benefit. I think that's something we can definitely scaffold up and reach even more students in the school. So it's, yeah, just, it's happening with our younger students as well, that transfer of and that exchange of information.
Thank you, Therese, for sharing that. And I think a lot of this work, sometimes people think, well, it's only supporting these group of kids. But I think a testament to what you and Sarah just shared, this is really about all kids. And so as we think about students that are graduating our system, right, we want them to be critical thinkers. We want them to have a beautiful heart. And these are skills that you can't necessarily teach in like a textbook. But it's that ongoing training and conversations that really help them really be prepared for the world that's in front of them.
Anybody else? I was thinking, when you were showing the video and presenting, I was thinking back to one of the first conversations I had with Ryan way back, I think, when I was in Delta before I was even on the board. And I was talking about how I was concerned that students of color were going to be telling trauma stories because there was a little bit of borderline. Do you remember that conversation? And like how we were talking about like how to develop student leaders that doesn't rely on telling the traumas? And that's all we know them for. And I think that what you presented tonight is a really good example of how to do that. Where you're not relying on students having to relive that all the time. And they have, they're able to talk about it in a place where they don't have to share it with the world. And they can still have this powerful impact, as we've heard from other folk up here, talking about that reach into the other classes. So I think that that's really powerful and to remember and that they're able to be heard and also advocate at the same time. And like Shawna was saying, like being able to go to some of the quarterly meetings. I'm always moved with how comfortable they are talking about things without worrying about like, oh, there's like board members here. And I really appreciate that about the students where they're not like trying to edit or like, like, I don't know what the right word to use right now is, but you know what I mean? Where they're able to be authentic in front of us. And I really appreciate that. And with the staff as well, not just the students, but the staff that share stories and feeling comfortable in those spaces. So I really feel privileged to be able to have attended those meetings with them. And one thing you said when you were talking about the youth conference, I was thinking about the the rollout of the ethnic studies curriculum soon. And how like, how cool that kind of partnership could be with programs like ethnic studies that we have here. And I'm not trying to self-promote, but just saying, but it's because it's like grounded on student activism is what built that field of study. And how power, and that was students of color that built it. And so how powerful that connection could be from students of color in the district too. And so just wanted to throw that out there for you to ponder on and think about.
Let's be in touch. Anything to make what they're learning relevant, right? Is is always best best for them. And it's something that they're going to remember forever. So I think it would be wonderful to have that partnership and.
And just thinking about the conversations too, that we're that we're talking about with the students amongst themselves. And how sometimes as adults, we think that students can't have these conversations. Or we've actually heard from people in the past about how these conversations aren't relevant for learning. When they're completely relevant for learning, you can see how much deeper students can think about each other, the world, and what their, the material they're engaging with. And I think that's important for the community to remember about too. And thinking about those and how we've moved from what was referred to as like the colorblind framework of thinking to saying like, no, we live with our experiences. Especially like as a person of color myself, knowing what that means to live with it every day. And for the students that have similar experiences like that, to be able to talk about it and say like, I want you to see me instead of to not see me. I think is really powerful too. So I didn't really have a question. It was more like just a reflective rant for you. Thank you, Marcy Ann, for your time. Thanks, board too. We went over a little bit, but I think that conversation was really important. And also part of the thinking from the leadership team was that we, as we're thinking ahead of the retreat, to be taking this information from the bias reporting. And from the equity work going into the on in the district to think about as we move into the retreat. So keep this in mind to you all for our work later on. Thank you. I'm still in charge up here. I muted myself. Okay, so we have a little bit to go. Do you all need a break or do you want to keep rolling? Okay, you know, let's, we're at consolidated, we're on consolidated. So let's go ahead and we'll take a short, like a five-minute break so that way we can do some transition stuff and people can do what they need to. We'll be right back, you all, in the watching, if you're watching. Everybody's here, right? We're good. Okay, well, welcome back, everyone, from our little break. We're on consolidated action at this part of the agenda. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for action. Does anyone have a question about anything in consolidated action?
Licensed personnel action.
Licensed personnel? Do you want to pull that?
The usual questions, yes.
Okay. Do we do that now?
Is it, is it in action? I think it's in action, right?
Does anybody else have anything else they wanted to? No. Okay.
First of all, I want to acknowledge as a board, we can't ask specifics about specifics hiring, resignations or firings. But I want to ask the common question I ask, especially at this time of the year is, if there is, and I want to use it for both licensed and certified. Is there any patterns of, patterns of challenges for hiring, retention? And also patterns for resignation that we are seeing in the past year or recently?
Jennifer, do you want to come up?
So as far as patterns, I would say it feels pretty typical to what we have seen over the years. We definitely are seeing a workforce shortage overall, but our school district also attracts individuals to come to us. So we, in hard-to-fill areas which we're experiencing throughout the state and the country, would be special education, dual language, bilingual teachers. Those would be the primary SLPs. So we're, we're getting creative in some of the ways we're also recruiting as well. But not concerns where we're seeing a bigger change than maybe we have in the past.
Thank you. I have a second question. This is the first time I maybe I noticed the probationally, probationary year, we can do it two years. Is it, did it change from one year to two years possibility? Or is it, has it been always that you can do probationary period for two years?
The probationary period is three years. When you see a number one, two, or three, typically that will mean what year they're in. So if they were temporary last year and came back this year, they would probably be a probationary two.
Okay. And after the third year, they can go out of the probationary?
Right. And then March is when you all approve contract renewals and that's when you get that big long list, moving people to their next year.
Awesome. Thanks.
Is that everything?
No further questions.
And nobody had anything else out of this section? Okay. Does anyone have, wish to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve consolidated action.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Sammy and seconded by Sarah. Is there any discussion, final discussion? Okay, we'll go, we'll start with Sarah and do.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. A motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then we are on consolidated information. As a reminder, the items under this portion of the agenda are for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss an item in consolidated information? Okay, sounds like we're good on that. And that takes us to board member comments. Do we have any board member comments? Sammy?
I have a comment or maybe a request prior to the retreat. If we could get the reports we received, post the listening sessions. That's really highlighted the themes and and the topics that folks shared. What do you celebrate in the district, what things you want to see as priorities? That report, if we can get it back, just as a refresher and do some readings prior. And one thing, if we will engage in in the strategic planning, one thing I'm hoping if we could either have staff do, or I would like to volunteer to do, is really try to have some pre-work to the session where we can say, this is policy level. This is probably both programmatic and policy level, or this is programmatic level. So it might help us to be centered around what could be a part of the strategic planning work? And what could be part of follow-up steps? So I think that kind of processing of the report is something I would like to see, or for us to work on during or before the session.
Okay. Is that something you have access to send us or is it posted somewhere?
No, it's, it's the report that Heidi put together, went from the listening sessions.
It's like the blue background.
Okay. You're going to resend it out, Kim? Okay, thank you. Any other board member comments? Go ahead, Therese.
Okay, there we go. So I am, you know, getting ready to register my seventh grader for sports. And we're doing the form for the physical. And I have some questions about the form. Some questions about some of the information that it's collecting. So my first, my first question is, where does this form come from? Who put this form together and decided this is the form that we should use for the physicals?
Sure. So the forms that parents are finding in final forms, I think that's the program that's online?
Probably. I mean, I got it as an email attachment, so, but that sounds like probably where it would be.
So those forms are taken directly from OSAA and Oregon Department of Ed as far as what it is, what information they need when it comes to registering our students for athletics. So I know there's been a lot of questions about the questions on the form, but those are questions that are required and have been in place for several years through OSAA.
Okay, so that's good. So my question, well, one question I have is this form, the way that it collects information with name and date of birth and then indicates sex, doesn't leave choices. And so it's unclear how parents ought to record that. And it doesn't identify gender either. And so is this something that, is there some communication we can provide to parents about an opportunity to fill that in? Since the form, the blank for the form itself doesn't leave room for, the implication is that you must choose male or female and that is it. And so I am thinking about the number since that might not apply to. And so wondering about if there's room to have some communication to make this form a little bit more inclusive. That's my my first question. And then the second question is, I parent a male child, but there are not equally invasive male questions on here. But there are definitely things that if you want to know these about girls. But there are definitely things that if you want to know these about girls, you probably want to know these things about boys, too. I mean, I know you can't ask, you don't, aren't going to get the date of his menstrual cycle, but without going into too much, there are similar experiences about my pre-adolescent male child that if you need this information for girls, you need that for boys, too, then, or you don't need it for them. So what can we do as a district to address that?
We can raise our concerns to OSAA.
Okay.
Ryan, did you want to take that from, take it from here? Is that, am I answering correctly there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've been in, we've been in contact through our athletic directors and then also ODE. There are a couple, I have not taken the time yet, but there are a couple of ORS citations as well at the bottom of that form. And so, or at the bottom of the policy from OSAA. So there's a little bit of digging we need to do. We didn't have time to do it over the last couple of days. But those, but we, we understand those questions that are coming forward and recognize that we need to make sure that the folks that are involved in those decisions have that, have that feedback.
I'm glad you say those questions are coming forward. That makes me think I'm not the only person then who's asking, okay. We, we didn't, sixth grade, sixth graders don't do this form, so it's my first going around seeing this form. So I didn't, hadn't, or I would have probably asked about it prior. I would be happy to give you my hard copy, marked-up form of the things that I would like to see us have more discussion about.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
I also wanted to share that I have been helping Kim with preparing for the August 29th back-to-school rally that Ryan talked about earlier and helping with planning for the lunchtime. Because, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, that the expectation is that all staff stay at Corvallis High School throughout the day for trainings. And so they need to be served lunch, which they'll be able to purchase. So we've been working on this, and we'll have a variety of options for staff to purchase. But we're going to need help with, like, selling and serving the food. And I planned to be there, and I thought if, I know a lot of you are working, and so it's difficult, but if you want to come help us serve food, be a great opportunity to interact with staff on that day. So it's August 29th, between 11:30 and 1:00. This one will be.
I just sent you all an invitation.
We'll be serving pizza and burritos and sandwiches. So it's actually kind of fun. We'll have music playing, and it's really a fun event.
Do we have to use a register?
Cash box.
Okay, good.
But it's really simple. It's like eight bucks.
Yeah, everything's going to be eight bucks.
Yeah.
We're keeping it as simple as we can.
Okay. No, I literally don't know how to use a register.
Yeah.
But I can use a cash box. I can help.
Yeah, no, it'll be simple. So, thank you.
I had a question, a follow-up question, Ryan, from your comments earlier. Are there opportunities for the rally at Linus Pauling for community supports or donations?
Yeah, absolutely. If you want to send, just connect with me. I will connect you with Joe Lycum, who's coordinating it. So if there are folks that want to contribute or participate, probably I'm, I'm the best initial point of contact to direct folks. Yeah, or, you want to, should it be you, Kelly? It's probably the easiest. Okay. Yep, we'd love that.
Any other Board Member comments?
Add one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just want to say thank you and congratulations on your, running your first meeting as a chair. You ran a great meeting and.
Oh, thank you. And I did, do you have something? Because I have something, too.
No, I was going to say, I think we're under schedule, too, which is a great tradition to continue.
It is a good tradition to continue.
That's a big deal.
So for community members listening, we're supposed to be at about 9:00 PM right now, according to our agenda. So we're not sad.
Rub it in, rub it in.
We're not sad that it's 8:13. But one thing, too, I wanted to point out is you'll have Emergent Strategies on here. If you have not read it yet before, we're going to be looking at this book throughout the year. So I talked to Therese and Shawna about how we did a shared reading last year that Ryan led with the, for the Board Retreat and with the Limitless Minds, that was what it's called, right? Yeah, okay, I was like, it was last year. I was like, I know, I was like, I remember the book. And how good that was to help inform our work for the retreat. And so I talked to them and then talked to Ryan about using Emergent Strategies for our Board Retreat. And we're not going to have enough time to read the whole thing and dive way into it for the Board Retreat. So one of the ideas that we were, we'll talk about more, uh-oh, there it goes, are the main themes for the retreat to look at is the chapter that's on page 83 called Interdependence and Decentralization, who we are and how we share, to kind of think of how we lead as a board and inform some of the retreats. So if you can, it's about 20 pages. If you have time to read that part, that'd be awesome in advance of the, of the retreat. And then we'll come back to other parts of the book later on throughout the year to talk about it. But this is a wonderful book, if you have not read it before. So, yeah. Any questions about that? Okay. It is a great book. Thanks, Therese, yeah. And so anyhow, okay, so that, I guess, is, is everything, then? And thanks for bearing with me, fellow Board Members and staff and community cheering my first meeting like this. But thank you, and I think we're adjourned at 8:15 PM. Awesome. No, I'm okay.
You have to use the gavel.